Eric.
Johnny Ray or Eric?
Eric.
Oh, well.
So you're from first?
Eric just, well, I was getting confused. Eric was texting me and Johnny Ray texted me. So I said, we have no form without you. And he says, okay, I'll be there. And then I'm looking, oh, that's Eric. That's Johnny Ray. So.
Does anyone see her? Uh, look at me. Huh? I see it after. He said he was coming from home.
Huh?
He said he was coming from home.
Who? Eric? Yeah. Okay, so he's texting you.
He said he was coming from home, but I didn't tell him to come here.
Is that me or you?
That's me.
Is that Eric? Oh.
Thank God they're good with this one. You know, did you say that the building is telling the building the phone is from you?
It is right up here.
Can we turn it back? Hello?
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Today is Thursday, October 27, 7:00 P.M. We have an established court, Council of the Hughes, Council of the Gavino, Council of the Castillo. All of you please stand for a pledge of allegiance. The things to the right of the United States of America and to a government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own. On this side, our pleasure to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. At this time, I'll introduce citizens' comments. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item 1A. The City of Florisville hereby post this emergency meeting in the City Council of Florisville on two hours' notice, and in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.045, state that this emergency meeting is called for the following reasons. One, upon inspection and assessment, the Plaza Waterwell, which provides water service to the residents of the City of Florisville, has been found to be near inoperable. Two, the remaining City of Florisville water wells have just enough capacity to serve the residents. Number three, the remaining City of Florisville water wells are continuing operating at full capacity due to the Plaza water well condition, placing stress upon the pumps and increasing the likelihood of failure. Number four, should one of those pumps at the remaining wells fail, the City of Florisville will face an immediate shortfall in water supply and inability to provide the residents with potable water, constituting an imminent threat to the health and safety of the residents. And number five, without emergency authorization, it is likely that no contractor will be able to address the issue for approximately three months due to backlogs with all companies holding the requisite expertise. Okay, who wants to go first?
Ma'am.
Yes, your ma'am.
I think I want to say that what we did last Saturday in preparing for a water modeling will help us avoid this in the future because that's one of the main purposes of doing a water modeling, is to make sure that we can address these issues. It was brought to my attention late Friday afternoon that there was a really serious issue once we were able to take care of the blockage from that well. And so, once I met with the contractor and Andrew, we sent over to Tom to turn this information over the weekend. He's been able to analyze and have a recommendation for you. And he's here to present the condition and is this a key for us to move forward with repairing this well?
Mayor, would you like a short version, a little harder version of what's going on?
The simple version, how about that?
All right. I've provided each one of you a package with a sketch on top of it. Need to inform me a little bit about how well works so that you can understand where our main issue is. The well at the Plaza location is about 1,000 feet deep, which is about three football fields stacked up on each other. At the bottom of that well, the deepest 200 feet is what we call a waterberry stratum, okay? And in your sketch, notice that that's this bottom part here, all right? Now wells work in that, they have a column pipe with a column at the end of it, and they kind of work like a straw in those millimeter cup, all right? And you've got water down there at the bottom, and you suck on it to get water out, all right? Well, what we have down here is what we call a well screen, okay? And that screen is used to prevent rocks, gravel, sand, any kind of debris from getting into your water as it's being sucked out by the pump. So it's a very important part of that well. An inspection of that well was done. Video camera was placed down into the well, and it was video. And what that inspection showed, that screen, is about 90% blocked, okay? Now, what happens at the bottom of the well is water flows through the waterberry strand. It flows through gravel, it's packed around the stream. It flows through the screen and up through the column pipe of the straw, okay? If the screen becomes blocked, if the water can't get in, and you can't suck anything out. And that's a fundamental problem that we have. Now, what is causing the blockage? Have any of you ever been to the cavern place?
Natural cave.
Natural cave. And you've seen the stalactomites, the long limestone formations that occur? That's pretty much what is happening here. You have a chemical reaction that's occurring between the soil, the water, the air, and maybe other things in there. And over a long period of time, basically a cement layer formed around that screen. Now, in your packet, I've got a picture of a brand-new screen before it is installed, so you got a feel for what it looks like. It's kind of a pipe-looking structure, and it's got a lot of holes in it, a lot of openings in there to sell that water pass. The next page, this page here, kind of shows the before and after. On this side, you see a very clean screen, you can tell the water can pass through it. And what you see here is basically one that's pretty blocked up. And if we show you the video, that's probably more or less what it would look like. And it's, and there's a cement layer on there. We don't know how thick it is, it could be very thick, it could be very thin, we just don't know. But that's pretty much why your well is not producing. There are some other problems on the next page. This is an actual picture of some of the column pipe that I pulled out of the well. And you'll notice that it's heavily corroded and there's holes in it. Have you ever tried to drink a soda that's got a hole in the straw? Then work great, all of that. Well, that's part of the problem too. That's why your well's not producing. So.
Which part of the well are you saying?
These are, these are in the, these are like at the top 800 feet, okay? You have a column pipe that goes all the way to the surface, and it goes all the way down to somewhat below the water level. Deep isn't it? It varies by well, but it's below the water level.
A deep isn't this well?
A total of about 1,025 feet. All right, so what's been done? And then where are we now and what's to be done? What has been done so far is, because all of this pipe has been pulled out of what's been taken out of service, all the pipe and the pump has been pulled out. It was surveyed with a camera. They went back in and they did an operation called scratching and jetting. And that's like taking a wire brush to a drain, okay? They lowered in there, it extends, and it basically cleans whatever can out inside of the walls, all right? They cleaned all that up, and then they went back down with a video camera to see what was remaining. What they saw with the casing was that it had aged, there's some corrosion. But at the end of the day, it's okay. The casings are around the pipe, it kind of helps the dirt collapsing into the well. And it's got concrete behind it, so we're not too concerned about it. We'd like to see it in better condition, but we're not too concerned. We've talked about the column pipe that was pulled out, it's corroded, it's not really salvageable, and the new pipe needs to go in.
Jeff, does he, he unsigned the casing? Yes.
And the well screen is what we're really concerned about. We think it's stainless steel, which means it stands up to corrosion pretty well. That's what was on the stage report when they built the well, they constructed the well years ago. We think it's in pretty good shape, but nobody's really actually seen the screen because it's covered. So there's a question mark there about its condition. After the scratching, they went back in with the camera survey, and they were able to, they were able to look at about 17 feet of the screen. They recall it goes down about 200 feet. Were able to look at a little bit of it because there's blockage. There's an old tool, a rod or something, that's stuck in there, and they couldn't get the camera in at all. I think it's reasonable to assume that what we see in that 17 feet is probably the condition of the remaining screen. So what do we do from here? We wanted to do two things right away, and this is what's really important. We're gonna do something called a sonar jet and acidation. What a sonar jet does, and I've got a picture of that in your packet, it's the last page. It's kind of a funny-looking retraption there. And what the sonar jet does is it uses sound to create vibrations. And it's that pulsating and that vibrations that help break up that cement layer that's formed on the inside of the well screen. What we're worried about is the sonar jet causing damage to the well screen. We don't know what kind of condition it's in. If it's in good condition, it couldn't be damaged at all. If it's in poor condition, it probably will sustain some damage. It's just a risk we're gonna have to take, and we don't know enough about it to reassess it. And then step two is the acidation. And what they do is they put a mild form of acid down there. And what that does is it kind of eats at the cement that's formed, helps break it up. So these two operations in combination have a very high success rate in water wells, in rehabilitating the water wells and bringing them back into a good production level. Like I said, it's a high rate of success. We think this will do it, but there is a risk that it won't. And you need to understand that. If this doesn't work, the only real option is to construct a new well. And the item before you is basically to do the sonar jetting, to do the acidations, to clean up after those two operations, to go back in with another camera survey to do the evaluation of the well. And that is a critical survey. We'll stop, we'll take a hard look at that video and determine what to do next. The options at that time will be to, if we don't think the sonar jetting and those operations work, we may come back and say, you need a new well. They may have had partial success. Perhaps they were to break up quite a bit of the cement, but not all of it. And we may say, let's put it into correction and see what we get out of it. And if they work great, everything gets cleaned out, we'll put it back into production. So we have two or three options once we're able to see that second survey. Assume that these techniques work. What they'll do is they'll clean up all the scrapings. They'll come back in with the column piping and the pump. They'll get it all, put it back together, put it into a service, do some testing, do some disinfection, and then it should be operational again. That's the Reader's Digest version. Tom?
On it.
Make sure these dollar figures are kind of before the council because they're important about what I suggested.
Okay. Since this is an emergency meeting, there's a certain focus on what will be done over the next three days and how much that costs. I had a lengthy discussion with the vendor today, Advanced Waterwell Technologies. I talked to Daniel Adams over there. And he believes that over the next three days, and let's see, is everybody looking at this letter? It's dated October 23rd. Yes, this one here. Okay. He believes that he can get the first five items done in the three days. And those five items have to all be done in more or less one operation. You can't do one through three and then walk off and wait and come back later. They kind of all have to be done. And the cost estimate that we came up with on that three-day worth of work, items one through five, was about $36,000. And of course, the remaining items, six through nine, which will be done within a couple of weeks of it being authorized, is a little more than $12,000. So that is the, that is the split between three days of work and then the remaining work. Did I cover that adequately, Luke?
Okay.
So basically, you're gonna have it between seven to eleven days?
Yeah, it takes a couple of weeks to get all of the items done.
But not all are gonna be needed.
Not all are gonna be done in the first three days, which is the emergency period that's covered by this meeting.
So this is just to check what needs to be done? It's not replacing any fact?
Oh, yeah, this, let me see. Yes, all of these items need to be done regardless. You need to do the sonar jet, acidation, clean up, do camera survey, and then coordination.
But this is just to take care of what's needed right now?
Yes.
And not including worst-case scenario is replacement?
Correct.
Okay.
Not this, this would be extra progress in this. Well, this is a very good question, and I'm very glad you asked it. If we looked at the video survey and we determined that the sonar jetting and the acidation did not work, then you need a new well.
And the cost for a new well?
The cost of the new well is somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. And that takes all of the, oh, that's months of preparation and work.
Because you can't put it in a script spot.
The Plaza well site would actually be a pretty good site, but we would have to go through some studies, engineering, bidding.
And possibly go lower if needed because of the water table?
I'm not, I don't know that you have a water table problem. Based on what I see, it's your screen, that's your main problem. You can go deeper if you want, but I don't know that that's necessary, and that would be part of the stuff.
But would it, would it solve future problems?
It might, but that's not waiting on my line.
Mr. Turf?
Yes.
If the well screens are still 90% clogged, how is this affecting the citizens that receive water from that well?
What we're seeing, the warp being tested that's coming out of the well has been fine. It's met all standards. So I'm not particularly concerned about the quality of the water.
No, but is it pressure, or I mean, if only 90%?
That well.
If 90% is clogged?
Yeah.
That well was taken out of service.
The well is out of service.
It's out there.
Yes, right now it's not working on its feet.
It's being, it's being backpedaled.
Ego service out of a different area now.
What these guys do is pushing water from basically the hospital well site.
From my well?
Yeah.
And B Street.
Yes, B Street.
Yeah, well.
And they're pushing it, they're pushing it through your distribution system a long way to the Plaza site.
So that's why you're saying it could affect those wells?
Right. And the thing is, well, you have four wells, one is out of operation, Plaza's now out of operation, so you're down to two. Now, the way wells work is, you know, you turn them on and they suck water, turn them off, and the well goes through a recovery process, okay? And then you repeat the process. And what's worrying is that the two wells you're using are being pumped much longer than the normal operations. They're not being given an opportunity to recover like they used to before that. And, you know, we have no information to predict what effect all this is having. But you tell me, I mean, how much more are those wells running than normal?
Well, right now, the three wells are running.
Twenty-four hours a day, which is highly unusual. Usually it's often are outside. So if, 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 and the engineers were on board, if we were to lose one of those wells for whatever reason, their mechanical, things do go wrong, power, pump could go out, the well could drop down so much that you'd lose production. Any one of those things can happen, and I think you would have a serious problem then in terms of trying to do a little water feature testing, so that's why.
So on this particular one, after you go through these steps and we spend $48,000 plus?
Yes.
If it doesn't work, then that's money we've lost?
Yes, and that is the risk you're facing.
Worst-case scenario, what's our emergency plan if, for instance, the B Street well blew down or one of the other wells?
The emergency plan I met with the council this afternoon is to do a budget revision and reach into the reserves that we have for the water department and finance this new well. It is Plan B. But we need to be able to see if we can recycle or redo something to this well to see if it's adaptable, even if it gets up to just 75% capacity. Then we can have an opportunity to pump what we have. And then after the water well, during the water well process, we can think about a long-term range, and we can actually think about putting another well on, even looking at going back and putting the first well back on, whatever reason it's attached to the elevated tower that's out of service right now. And so we need to be able to look at the study. But preparing for the study is all we had a chance to do before this well went down on Friday. And so, thank you so much, Tom, for spending the time to go through it. Well, we wanted to give the council an opportunity because during our workshop meetings, we do not speak about well at all. We do talk about footmen, those kind of things you would have been aware of. But we haven't had opportunity, because it's such a crisis, that we needed to happen to come and to speak to you on that issue.
For some odd reason that, say, the B Street well, the well collapses or drops below the water level, do we have an emergency backup to, say, get some water from, you know, from a roof which is?
Okels.
Okels.
Okels? Or is that out of the question because of cross-contamination of the water?
Well, we're afraid of that, but I mean, in the worst-case scenario, we needn't do that.
Do we have a pipe that stretches out there?
Yes, we have a closed, closed line.
It comes to RFPCU.
So it is existing, the pipe is just closed?
We just have to set up an agreement with them in that situation.
Okay.
And we'll know in the next few days?
We're sending to blow in different pipes because they're at about a higher pressure than we are?
And we have the next few days to be at the start negotiating that in reference to what we're gonna do for our emergency Plan B, because we'll know in three days. Now, the gentleman, Adams is in over there.
Yes, Daniel.
Daniel, okay. So he, they do have a rig in place, which is a pretty complicated setup. They do have a rig in place right now for, they came to help us with the blockage. I'm anxious to do that. So there is a rig in place. The urgency that, he has other assignments, if he does not, because it's here, they'll do that. But this is an assignment of the job, so he only has to put it where the job is going. He needs to know tomorrow, otherwise he needs to move this rig. He probably won't be back into this area for some, I believe he said, three months. And as you can imagine, this rig is not something that everyone passes, there's not a lot in this area. This is a specialty work in reference to the well, and so that's another urgency that we have in reference to timing.
Now, are other pumps, after this was taken care of, we have to go in and do maintenance on the others?
We do need to do some maintenance, and I hope to, Nero has made up a list for each one of the wells because he maintains them and watches and follows. We've been talking to our engineer in reference to what we should do, which ones we do this budget year, which ones we do next budget year. But we want to take care of this particular well because it is out of service because it's less than 10% pumping, so we need to be able to address this. And then take it out of service so that we can take care of that blockage.
How old are the wells?
This one's 28 years, hospital's 52, and the other one's built in 2006.
Yes. Now, Nero was speaking to the history, can you remember the last time this well had been serviced?
I've been here 19 years, and I haven't seen nobody service that well.
Is there, every five, I want you to be serviced every?
Every pipe is staying here. Or is it? Or is it removed?
Depends on its operation.
Yes.
So because, could we safely say that because of the lack of maintenance, that all that got built up? Because it would have been something that maybe every five years we would have known and could clean it up?
I believe it's the primary cause.
There was no scheduling set up for this.
Yeah, we didn't mention from the previous, from the history that I've looked at. Apparently, every time this was brought up, in the previous, it's constantly going back to age six or whatever, it was always said, no, put down.
But it is one of the things we're hoping that we can get some of our new money in five years from Tom to say, every, you know, five years you should do this, every seven years you should do this, every 10 years you should do this, every year, and you should do that. So we can have a maintenance schedule set up for not just our water well, but also some of our water systems, which is why it's on 20-plus to do this water modeling. And so we're hoping that we can get this going, adjust this emergency issue, and then analyze the system, and we can attack that on a broader way. We can have a tactical plan of, these are the key years when we need to be able to do something so that we can set money aside, our budgeting purposes, put that in mind, of these are the things that we must do.
Mentioning the budget, was there a reason that this didn't get covered in the budget?
Well, we didn't know, we had some maintenance money in the budget to maintain some of the wells and address some of the issues on Nero's list. But at this point, we initially thought that just doing the blockage, unstopping it, would make it flood.
But we knew that the issues existed back then.
Well, according to staff, they told me that they'd come to the council before to ask many, many times.
To council, they went to see the manager?
Well, to pay the city rent.
And to council.
And they would say that we didn't have the money, so it stopped there, so I don't know.
The only way you can determine to see how bad or how good the most conditions are is you have to have a camera, and you gotta go down and survey it. And then they'll tell you, you got too much scathing, or your stream is starting to flood. And that's the, that's the only way you know what's down, what's down, and what's the option.
So there's nothing that can be really done on a normal basis to, for you to just to see what it is, or to see what, what kind of problems it's having or anything like that?
The only, the only way we can do that is kind of what we just did right now. Yeah, take all the piping out and then put that camera in there and then.
And is that something that you do like every five years?
Your five to ten years.
Every five to ten years.
So every five years you do that and hopefully catch what there's...
Yes, yes. And on the three wells that we have, we've put money for certain things, the things that were bad, but we never anticipated something this bad.
If you go in there and you take the well out every five to ten years, you're able to go in there and clean out that cement film that's... And it's real thin, so it's relatively easy to get out. But over time, if you don't do it, it just builds, and it builds, and it builds, and it gets stronger and stronger, and it gets harder and harder. So even the hospital one, you said it's fifty-two years old?
But I believe that we have to redrill, rebuild. So we got a little bit of time on that.
Probably got redrilled for the same purpose?
Yes.
I think it's like, I would say like ten, twelve years.
So it's got two maintenance jobs?
Two maintenance jobs, about ten or twelve years.
So two maintenance jobs, they've been going by the five years that have not been done now. So we really don't know technically if there's a mission. Just because it's not pumping water doesn't mean that it doesn't have, that's what I'm saying. It feels oriented a bit.
Now, M N S will be overseeing this project?
Well, consultant advise, if you guys wish, it's a maintenance job. It's something that staff would supervise. But we're a phone call away if we come down here and visit.
Well, instead of, you know, instead of tying up staff, you know, my thinking would have to be that to have the M N S actually, you know, on hand so that if there's a step that's missed or has gone unnoticed, that, you know, y'all will be allowed, y'all will be able to...
Like I said, we're a phone call away. And that should be...
At least through, at least at the end of every step, to say, okay, we're done with this. Okay, inspection, done with this, inspection.
Well, every time they do something, they put the camera in there, they survey it, and then they send us the video, and then it passes to...
They, who are you talking about?
The events of the work.
But we haven't had them then. You said you had them in service, so they wouldn't put the camera down.
No, no, no. They've done the scraping and all that, and we had videos of it. Of all the stuff that they done.
When they were doing the, when they were trying to unblock it, that's when they sent the video to us. And staff's been sharing that with M N S. But when it came to this point that we could not do it, and the blockage was going away, and to look further, that's why I brought the engineer in, so that he can... Because when they bring in this big ticket of forty-eight thousand dollars, and the twenty-two thousand dollars that they already spent did not fix it, and then there may be some additional things that we need to do. Somewhere estimated, and it's just an estimate, about seventy-seven thousand dollars if we can save this well, we need to have the engineer involved.
We'll be in touch with staff, everybody.
And he looked at the estimate, he finds it fair and equitable at this point, but we don't have the luxury to go out to bid because it gets an emergency. And believe me, I would not have called an emergency meeting in two-hour notice if it did not reach that point. We had a conference caller in here this afternoon. We talked, when I got the phone with the engineer, I got the phone with the attorney, who then called the mayor, and he turned that he definitely need to call this meeting to them.
And there's a better date, it's here, September the twenty-ninth, to meet, stating these issues. That's over a month ago. Were you aware of this?
No.
We're telling him all these issues that the staff ago had just reviewed.
I think this is... That's it, that's water well, I know it.
It's in the package.
That was the twenty-two thousand, yes. We went over that. That was the twenty-two thousand, you know that, that's the...
But that was September twenty-nine?
Twenty-twenty-nine. That's associated with the twenty-two thousand dollars that we did.
Yes.
The one that was the blockage, that was associated with the twenty-two thousand dollar one. That's when that one was done.
And that was then, it didn't work?
Right, we thought that getting rid of the blockage and doing that would get it back up, but they didn't. When they put the camera down, because they couldn't even put the camera down there, when they finally had camera, it was way worse than what we had anticipated. We thought we may have to do some additional cleaning, but that's not what happened. But they did that, they left it in the twenty-ninth, and then you did the work not long after that. We did the...
Is there... When we do the inspections, we have to call these people, is that something?
Well, what they normally do is they do the work, and then they put the camera, and they give the survey back. And that's what we found is. So every time you got the survey back, the first time when we thought, well, it's just a matter of a piping, that wasn't the case. But then when that was found blocked, we couldn't go any further. So we'd have to get advanced. Advanced came and broke the blockage, and that's the twenty-two thousand that we pushed. When we broke the blockage and other things that were obstructions that was in there, finally they were able to get down deep enough to see the stream, and that's when it came back and said, this is clogged. We need to do this. And that's where we are right now.
Forty thousand dollars, but it's... I am a tablet screen. I took a picture of it.
Down?
Ten inches?
Yes, I think it's a ten inch.
So we have fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yes. The last page we shared of the statement with your agenda, there's the budget, I don't have the budget code.
And we'll have to come back at a later date and do the budget amendment, but yes, I don't know if I did need to come back this afternoon and then respond to this topic.
We're gonna take it, we're gonna do it in amendment. Well, for sure, water and sewer are critical in South East City. I said, water and sewer are critical to any city, so it's still seventy-seven, so we're looking forward to it.
Plus contingency?
On any business?
Seventy-seven plus contingency, except the operation.
How many hotels are on B Street?
Everything of that, so I have one eighty-one.
So everything?
Yes, everybody did a one eighty-one in the lights of B Street and Hospital, Reward and Plaza on the other side.
Okay, so everything on the B Street side of the well, on the well side, is fed off of that? So you have La Quinta, S O S Four, the B Ray. Okay, all of those, okay.
But then on ninety-seven, we've got a fifty-two thousand that helps us control...
Reduce the pressure or add pressure.
Control our distribution system. That way, the water's flowing from, if Plaza was operational, it'd be flowing from all three.
Now, if this well is down, the pressure, the water's gonna go down, right?
Well, right now, we're...
And we're holding right now, I mean, it's been a while, I mean, since September, so we're still doing good right now.
Do y'all know what P S I is running at?
It's over there on the B Street, it's like forty-five, fifteen.
Oh, thirty-five, no.
The site for its problem?
It's like forty.
So everybody's watering at the same time?
Yeah, but I think during the year, you said thirty-five is the minimum requirement, so we need a minimum requirement.
That's not particularly good.
So we need to ask people to get a cutback on the watering?
I'll take that.
I need to get to the next three days. And we can definitely, I won't worry a lot, I need to get to the next three days and get a camera.
So I hear the complaints that are coming in that they used to put two spring trays, and now we're gonna need one because there's no pressure?
Well, after we see, we're gonna fix it, I mean, if they come back with the pumping, then we'll go there.
My main concern is the, is the fire suppressors, is the fire spring resistance because they, because they do need to operate off of...
It will affect all of your fire suppressors. If you don't have the P S I's to run those pumps or those, they won't go off. So they have fires, so that's like...
Quickly, around fifty P S I, minimum?
Something like that, yeah. Depends on what kind of situation you have, and, you know, if one goes off at a time, you have to have that P S I, so that needs to be notified because that's a life safety, so we can all...
Can we do a motion?
Does the... They don't have fire pumps, you don't have any fire pumps. So they're just, they're running off of your pressure, so that's...
That's either the last time that we've...
How many is seventy-seven?
The last time that we get pressure there, we take off, let's...
After advance issues?
We were seventy-two to forty-five.
If the advance one...
So Marius are there, good. So Marius or Ben?
Three dollars.
And you said, exactly.
That's forty-three, fifty-three, or four, it's a lot, I just... And then what if it's that everything goes well? Then you need to do the equipment, replace some of those things, and that twenty thousand, four hundred, thirty thousand, forty thousand, ten thousand, and purely as equipment.
Okay, so that's where that...
That's what it, that's what it said, is that?
That's the seventy-seven.
Did you see that decision?
That's where it's at.
And then I believe we're asking for twenty percent in the decision. So we have the ability to make the decisions on the side.
The twenty percent is the engineer's in case something...
What the engineer's doing is fifty percent?
No, I said, the key percentage is twenty percent for stability in case something happens. It's just so that we don't have to come back and have that emergency.
You're giving fifty percent?
Twenty percent. Okay. Twenty percent.
Whatever the council...
So do we have a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, because by the time you get through with it, it's gonna be closer to a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're lucky. We're still, but we have a budget in the well. We should have them up here by half the week around, like the firm said. And we're gonna have to come back with a budget. We do have the money, but...
And when we come back to the budget amendment, we're gonna have a list and probably some quotes from the engineer working as to what we're gonna do and how we wanna phase this thing to make those up, okay? So we just wanna say, okay, we fixed this one and not pay fifteen thousand. You know, well, in particular, B Street well, right? Because actually, there's two motors there now, it should be three, but we need to get power to that third motor. So we need to address those kind of things. We have some generators we need to put in place. Literally, he has his own list of things in his little tablet there that we need to go through. But what we need to do is take care of this emergency, and then we will come back and program things for you coming forward. And so...
Prioritize.
Yes.
Other means, and so we can talk about compressors, and say which ones, and he can get numbers to say which one we have.
Could you assure that please keep us informed?
Yes, ma'am, this will be on the agenda. And M N S, we're gonna be focusing on everything water. And we're gonna have our engineer focusing on everything that is sewer. And then we do have a third engineer that's looking to do qualific, qualification and request for qualifications?
Request for qualifications.
Then we're gonna be getting some requests for qualifications for you a little bit too, so we can have a third engineer.
What's this?
I haven't come to print this, Chris.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So that will go to two A U business, consideration in action to approve a service contract with Advanced Waterwell Technologies and approve the expenditure of approximately seventy-seven thousand to recondition and repair the Plaza water well. Motion.
I'm gonna make the motion to approve a service contract with Advanced Waterwell Technologies and approve the expenditure of approximately seventy-seven thousand with a twenty percent contingency for designer materials to recondition and repair the Plaza water well.
And citizens comments? Man answer. Motion by Councilwoman Maria, second by Councilman Mireille, all opposed. Motion carries through, seatbelt. Job will be done in three days, right?